I'm a main life since Starburst, I do a small landscape business. I do all shorts of landscaping and one of the things I know that taking care of plants and greenhouses and the therapeutic benefits of growing plants has been proven to be very beneficial to a lot of different people with issues. And to not allow someone that ability to grow a plant and to receive the benefit from just the growing of this plant, I find is unacceptable. An LD-35, an act to allow a qualifying patient to use medicinal cannabis in a hospital, I am all for it. I've gotten to meet these two wonderful ladies here. Met both of their daughters, I met Kaylee at a wonderful cannabis event. I got to know her and her mother and just to spend 10, 15 minutes with these ladies is just phenomenal. I met Cindy May several years ago, a couple of years ago at another meeting that was put on and Cindy May was in a wheelchair. She really wasn't doing anything. And a couple of weekends ago, another wonderful guy, Brian Breton, put on an event for their organization. Cindy May was standing up and dancing. She was moving around. It was totally, totally incredible. Little Kaylee was dancing around, having a grand old time. And to not allow these women to take care of their children the way they would like to be taken care of, I find that unacceptable as well. I'm very lucky, I have five wonderful, healthy kids. And if any of my children had any of these issues, that cannabis could help, I would be supported at 100%. So I support LD-23 and LD-35. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Still taking testimony in favor of LD-35 and LD-23?
Good morning, committee. Senator Brackey, Representative Meadeen, rest of the members. I am Glenn Peterson. I'm a patient, a caregiver. I operate a dispensary down in Bitterford, Canuvo. I'm active with the Main Association of Dispensary Operators. And I am here in support of LD-23 and 35. I have not prepared, I am from Polanue. And we are, we have been living medical cannabis for about the last five years, my family and I. I have six family members who work at my dispensary, who dispense cannabis to eligible patients. And every day over dinner, we sit and we hear the stories of how people's lives have changed. It is unbelievable when people say, "Thank you for my life back." I am no longer debilitated and locked on a couch. My wife has improved and I have, it is such a privilege to be part of this attempt to normalize the use of cannabis. We have seen patients lose 80 to 100 pounds the first year in using cannabis as an alternative to pharmaceuticals. We have also seen patients who have conditions that aren't listed but still have conditions that they qualify for, find improvement in those conditions that aren't on the list. It includes just eating, sleeping. You cannot heal without those two ingredients. We see people having an attitude change. They no longer grab the gray crayon. They go for the red and yellows and greens and they start to smile. Their families' lives are improved and it is my wish that legislators get out of the business of telling doctors how to do their business. And with that as a lead-in, once folks get off of all these different prescriptions, they are, it is a detriment for them to go into a hospital and be denied the things that are actually working for them. And I'll tell you one brief story. I have an employee, a veteran. He destroyed both his ankles in the service and it got to a point where they had to amputate above the ankle. Well, I've had to sneak him in his cannabis capsules or edibles into the hospital, into the rehab, so he can continue. His VA doctors say, "You are not filling your oxy prescriptions. You've just cut your foot off. What are you doing?" And he says, "I only use cannabis." And they go, "Can we write that down?" Because it is unbelievable. So I just would like you to please consider the patient who has taken this step and advocated for themselves and have found success with cannabis. The other side of it is, I am not a recreational legality fan. I don't believe recreation is the way to sell anything. I believe in adult use, personal sovereignty, that you advocate for yourself and you do what is necessary. And to, it is my opinion, if we cannot eliminate the conditions that we are recommending for, then I have to support adult use because there are so many other people who will benefit from this that are currently not. And I thank you for your time and I'll be back in support of other bills.
Thank you very much. Very good use of four minutes.
Well, sorry about that. There's certainly a couple hours.
Good morning.
Hello.
How are you?
Great. Hello, my name is Joel Peppin. Currently reside in Standish. I'm a Senator Brackey, Representative Meadeen, representative of the committee. I grew up in Auburn, Maine and graduated every little high school. Really good friend of mine in high school and a friend of mine into college. In 2010, took his own life to suicide. His name's Nicholas Taylor. He was a great kid, all-star athlete in high school, strong, really good kid, couple of years EUSM. He dropped out, he had developed an addiction for pharmaceutical opiates, OxyContin and whatnot. And I don't know if medical marijuana could have helped him, who's to say? I really believe that it would have. Was his condition of being addicted to opiates debilitating. I'm not sure if a lot of doctors would say yes, or if they could even really understand it. As a caregiver, I can tell you that I've gone to patients who give me a list of 21 different medications they're on. And after a month or two of quality cannabis products, they've been able to cut that list down to four and five medications daily. So in addition to what Glenn had been talking about and everyone else up here talking about the patients that are currently benefiting from this, let's also think about the potential patients in the past that we could have lost. I think if my friend Nick had had access to quality cannabis, he'd be up here today supporting this for everyone else. So I do support LD-23, LD-35. The one thing I'd like to say about that, I think the smokeless option, or the smokeless language in that bill is crucial. I think a patient in the hospital with the edibles, the tinctures, the salves, the topicals, it's not ruining or impeding on anyone else's stay at the hospital, whether you're a patient or you're an employee there. And I think that's critical and I also support that.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Questions? Thank you. Anybody else here speak in favor?
Hello, my name is Dawson Julia and I'm a medical marijuana registered primary caregiver from Chinamane. I'm here to testify in strong favor of Bill LD-35 and also of Bill LD-23. In my testimony, I will tell the story of a former deceased cancer patient I provided medical cannabis for and his struggles to use medical cannabis in a hospital in an effort to help fight his cancer. The medical cancer patient, his name is Derek. His story began in 2007 when he began to observe severe back pain while trying to perform his job as a contractor building homes. When Eric visited the doctor concerned of this issue, he was diagnosed with arthritis at the age of 34. Eric followed the doctor's orders and began treatment using anti-inflammatory as well as painkillers. As swelling on his spinal cord continued and the pain got worse, Eric continued to seek the doctor's help and continued to ask questions about, "Could it be something worse?" After a year and a half of failed arthritis treatment, Eric seeks help from a chiropractor and discovered through an X-ray that he had cancer. Eric went into chemo and radiation in late 2008. He fought tooth and nail to do everything he could, did everything the doctors told him to do. He lost his home, sold a lot of his stuff and did everything he did to survive the fight. When Eric was told in 2011, there was no longer a plausible treatment for his late stages and as his body had received far too much chemo and radiation, Eric did not give up. Instead, he researched and he learned about alternative treatments that he could pursue. He found Chinese mushrooms, he changed his diet and he found medical cannabis, which he used in a concentrated form, also known as Rick Simpson oil, as others testified. Eric's research discovered when you concentrate high levels of certain cannabinoids from cannabis plants, you can potentially kill cancer cells while protecting and promoting healthy cells. Eric went on a mission to obtain these concentrated amounts of cannabinoids and within days after returning home to die in hospice, Eric had done his first dose of concentrated cannabis oil. After two months, Eric had arrived at his home for hospice in an ambulance and required assistance to walk when he was sent home. Two months later, he went to his doctor's office and he drove himself. He was 25 pounds heavier and his tumors were no longer visible on his back. His doctor asked him for information about what he had been doing and Eric explained everything. They did some tests and Eric came back several weeks later to do a follow-up visit where he was met by three doctors and they pursued to ask him what he had done. At the end of that visit, Eric was told by the three doctors, he had to continue with chemo and radiation. They felt that would be the best bet, just to make sure that everything was gone, even though the tests showed there was no cancer left in his system. So he told him outright, "No, I'm going to stick on this oil thing and it seems to be working." They threatened him. They told him that if he did not continue with the chemo and the radiation that they prescribed, that they would consult his insurance company and he would lose his health coverage. Eric did the chemo, he did the radiation and several weeks later, he started to lose feeling in his feet and he eventually was told he was going to be paralyzed from the waist down because they'd given him too much radiation. Several weeks later, he got a bad infection. He went in the hospital, he brought his Rick Simpson oil with him and at night, when he was sleeping, the doctor had taken his cannabis oil and thrown it in the garbage. Eric was told this by the nurse the next day when he awoke. And Eric was for three weeks not allowed to have any cannabis in edible form in the hospital. Shortly after that, his tumors came back several months later and I know I'm out of time here, so I'm just trying to sum it up, but he passed away Friday the 13th, February 2015. So I asked the senators and representatives of this committee to not only please pass the current provisions in this bill, but to also go above and beyond and to include provisions that will protect patients like Eric from ever having to face forced, potentially life-threatening treatment demands when the patient prefers and has true convictions and reasons for cannabis treatment instead. Thanks for your time, guys. I'll have some talkies.
Thank you very much. Let me make sure there aren't any questions. Thank you very much. Thank you. Still taking testimony in favor?
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Michael Brandt. I'm from Detroit, Maine. I'm 28 years old. I've lived in Detroit my whole life. I was diagnosed with beginning treatment with many mental disorders from a young age. I was six. I was prescribed extremely addicting methamphetamines like Rohin, Adderall. I was given regular doses of extremely addicting benzos like Xanax, Thorazepam and Clotons. Throughout my childhood, I was medicated, well, this medicine was my surrounding. I had my extreme highs, my low lows, my mood swings, violent, random rages and many confusing thoughts about others. Doses and drugs were always changing and I found myself constantly complaining to my doctor about not working right. In 2011, at the age of 24, I started experimenting with street drugs. Stopped taking my medication. I was prescribed, in my mind, the street drugs are working better than the pills given to me by the doctors, which in reality, that wasn't how it was. I was a bit of a jerk and an asshole, just to say the least. I ended up getting on heroin, cocaine, and crystal meth. I was a complete junkie, selling everything I had to support my habit and treating people in my life who loved me like jerks. In 2014, I hit rock bottom. After trying several times unsuccessfully to quit on my own, I realized I was told to attend the Acacia where I could join their rehab program. When I arrived at the hospital with the support of my family, I was told that there was a shortage of beds and what would be the best was if I just went home and kept using until they could find me a spot. I went back and notified my doctor again, telling him what I was told by Acacia and within like the next three days, I had a bed. So now I'm on the methadone program, which don't work really well. I'll probably be on that for another year or so, but if I was ever to be in a car accident or anything like that and had to go to the hospital, they're going to give me narcotics. The state has been funding that, my drug treatment. It's going to be a total waste of money. The first time they give me anything narcotic, I'm going to be right back on the street again. So it would be a big help if you guys could consider LD-35. Because I'd really be screwed at this point if I never hospitalized and need anything for pain as far as narcotics. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you for sharing that. I hope you continue to do well in your recovery. Thank you. Can anybody else here speak in favor of either of these?
Kendra Corsey. I'm not going to repeat my feelings about cannabis medicine. I think we all are pretty much under the understanding that it's very effective in treating a number of debilitating and non-debilitating health conditions. You heard my wife's story about the Rick Simpson oil. Our family is blessed that she is still with us and healthy today because of cannabis. I have been a patient of medical marijuana for the past nine years. Until I was 35 years old, I had never touched it. I do not believe in it. I am not, was not at that time, very open-minded. I'm a very clinically-minded person. I did a postgraduate degree program at Marymount University, CNRN, and I'm the president of the main chapter of the Medical Cannabis Nursing Association. A few things that I'd just like to touch upon, I have submitted written testimony, the citations of all the articles that I'm going to discuss in this testimony or in my speaking to you right now. Concerns of mine as a nurse. We've heard physicians, caregivers, patients, healthcare providers, dispensary owners, all talking about the necessity for open communication with patients and their healthcare providers, eradicating the stigma of cannabis medicine. And I feel as a nurse that this is incredibly important for people who are in a hospice, nursing home, hospital facility, that all of the healthcare providers are aware of all of the products that they're using, herbal or allopathic. They all do work together and can have an effect on each other. So by allowing the hospitals to make a decision to have a policy in place for people to bring their cannabis into a medical facility is opening those lines of communication and I can't stress to you that enough. In some of these bills, I've been doing a lot of research. Like I said, I am very scientifically-minded. I like to read clinical studies and see the scientific proof. There is a dramatic lack of federal quality funding for studies on cannabis medicine in the United States because of these federal issues. However, there is a lot of research that's been done overseas and there is current research going on for the various conditions that cannabis can treat. Some of these are not debilitating. For instance, I am a caregiver as well and I have a patient that I make a medication from the Rick Simpson oil in it. And she has plantar fasciitis, which is pain in the feet. Many people experience this, myself included. She has never touched marijuana, ever. She has found incredible relief using this. Now, plantar fasciitis is not a debilitating condition. She still carries on a job, she still works and she tries to find ways to treat her pain using cannabis so she does not have to go to the opiates. Another point that I would like to make as a nurse is, I have seen patients who have been on a huge amount of antiepileptic drugs. A lot of these drugs are benzodiazepines, which are very dangerous. They can kill someone and I have been in a situation where we've had to administer these types of drugs out of van Valium, et cetera, where it depresses the respiratory drive and it is dangerous. So my concern is if these children go to the hospital, the parents and physicians have worked very hard to very slowly, slowly wean these children off of anti-seizure medication. If a child is seizing in a hospital and the hospital has a policy that she cannot have her rescue medicine, what are they going to do? They're going to put her back on the benzodiazepines, which suppress the respiratory drive. Thus, it starts the process all over again for these children, having to wean down off medication. Another thing that I'd like to touch upon is the contraindication with using cannabis with other medications. And I would like to remind everyone on the committee that Marinol is THC, it's a synthetic THC. It's FDA-approved. It is used frequently in hospitals. I can't cite to you the contraindications or the side effects right offhand, but I did include that in my testimony for you to review. And Sativex is another medication that is under FDA process of approval right now. It is not approved in the United States, but it is used for purposes a lot. One other thing I'd like to touch upon is the legality issues as a nurse administering medications. I have been in touch with the State Board of Nursing and their policy is that if a nurse administers according to their facility policies, they are not at risk of losing their license. Nurses are licensed through the state, not through the federal government. So I think that's important for us all to remember as far as putting healthcare professionals at risk. So I think that covers it and I'll take any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ryan Vegan from Roman. I'm in support of LD-23. I'm a veteran. I got lucky because my elbow got blown off and I had access to the medical cannabis program in Maine. You know, I also suffer from PTSD, which I got my greatest relief with medical cannabis. But usually, a lot of times when PTSD becomes debilitating, it's too late. They've either killed themselves or they've hurt themselves in such a way that it's just so damaging. You know, if we have, in Maine, we already have the program set up, why not give veterans and other people who are suffering that access before their condition becomes debilitating? You know, it just seems right. Another thing is doctors go to school for eight years plus to figure out what's best for us to put into our bodies. Nothing against you all, but I would much rather have a doctor tell me what is right for my body. You know, that's just, I'll keep it short.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thanks for being here. Anybody else here to speak in favor of either of these two bills? Yes? Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. Well, here we are again. My name is Matthew Lanzo, we're acting members. I have a couple of things to say on this one I totally feel we should be taking from the government's hands and put back to the doctors with multiple different reasons. I mean, I think that's a dog bite could be one, you know, cannabis creams in other countries, as you know, Spain has a great potential for antibiotic, especially with Mirexol. So if you want to use cannabis cream for your dog bite, then you agree with your doctor. You should have the right, not the government. And the other one, as far as hospitals are concerned, I refuse their surgeries for colostomy bags and this and that and I'm done. I feel if the doctor in a white coat's not learning their endocannabinoid system, I tell people, "Find a new doctor." Period. So if I'm in the hospital because I broke my leg for some reason and I'm not going to take any of your poisons for Crohn's disease, I want to have the right to take what works for me. And again, I think this is taking it from the federal government's hands and putting it back to the states and Maine's an old state. You know, if state had system marijuana, that Patrick Kennedy was a co-founder, I went, "Oh, great, I know this is just about protecting interest." I think Maine being an old state, we need to take the lead and not say, "What's Colorado doing? What's Maine doing?" And that's on all kinds of bills, that we need to take this back, that it's we, the people, not them, the government. It seems all these issues, everybody's afraid of the federal government. We're an old state, original 13 fires. Relax, say we give this back to the doctors and we take it back as we, the people. Period. Thank you. And I tried to relax this time around. Usually I jump up and down a little more.
You did a good job. Thank you very much. Any questions? Anybody else who just came in favor of either of these two bills?
I'm from Stark's Maine and I am here to speak in favor of LD-23 and LD-35. LD-35 is especially important for me via to allow a qualifying patient to use medical marijuana in a hospital. My husband has epilepsy and he had been hospitalized after having what's called a status epilepticus episode. And he's been, had been under the care of Dr. Sulak, his regular physician, but when we got to the hospital, he was no longer allowed to have his cannabis therapy, which was a very important part of his therapy and to the point of it being a struggle of people saying, "This is the way that it is in our hospital and this is the way it's going to be." This put my husband's life at risk. And since that point, I've had this idea that we have to liberate the hospitals and all the equipment in some way because maybe they're not really serving our needs in the ways that they did in the past. So, and then the bravery of the mothers with children with epilepsy has kept this fight in the forefront as to why we need to do this because our family members are at risk of dying and that's not right. And so I strongly urge that... And so I strongly urge that this go through. The other one is about medical conditions being debilitating. It's very important that the relationship between a doctor and a patient be the primary determining factor in how the patient is treated. It's not a legislative matter how cancer patients are treated. It's not a legislative matter how other patients are treated. And this should be the same way. This should be between the doctor and the patient. And so I urge that that debilitating be removed. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who just speak in favor of either of these two bills? Anybody who's speaking opposition to either of these two bills? Anybody here who's speaking in opposition? Yes?
Good morning.
Good morning, Senator Reiki, Representative Mateen, members of the committee, Andy McLean with the Maine Medical Association. I'm speaking, we have a position on just one bill before you today throughout the course of the entire day and that is LD-23. We are opposed to LD-23. I also assumed that there would be some questions for the medical community, so I tried to respond to those. Some brief history about the evolution of physician opinion on this topic. The Maine Medical Association opposed the legislation that appeared before this committee prior to the 1999 referendum and we did oppose the referendum in 99. Since then, we have and we continue today to try to assist physician practices with compliance with the law. And in 2009, we took no position and that remains our position today. We are neutral on the law as it stands now. And I suspect that we will not take a position on a recreational use of marijuana. Valid question, should that come before the people of Maine? We'll leave it to the people of Maine. I think Dr. Wojewitz frankly expressed our views pretty well, that there's likely to be a capacity issue here. I don't know that there are enough physicians who are comfortable with this to handle an elimination of any requirement to take advantage of the medical marijuana law. I wanted to observe that there is in the current law, a process for adding conditions, should there be an indication for it. It's in section 24, 24 sub 2 of the statute and the DHHS rules. I guess I would close and be prepared to respond to questions by mentioning that there are, in terms of informed consent to medical marijuana use, there really are three risks that we have pointed out to physicians that they should consider with respect to this law. And most of them will be obvious to you. One of them is the continuing uncertain status of medical marijuana under federal law. And two would be the fact that this is, as it stands now, medical marijuana is a substance that is unregulated by the FDA. The FDA is the standard of care for drug therapy in this country. And finally, and this may be, this risk may be mitigated some now that we have a more formal dispensary system, but that is that there is some concern about the unknown strength of the active ingredients in the marijuana and the potential for impurities. With that, I would be happy to take questions.
President Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It would be interesting.
Yes.
I'm wondering, I mean, recently, we just worked on another bill and you've heard from many of your members on both sides of that bill, some strongly for, some strongly against. Have you maybe reached out to some of the physicians that you represent who do advocate and prescribe or, excuse me, recommend medical marijuana and got their point of view on this and where they stand on perhaps opening up the conditions?
Not specifically, but we have been in fairly regular communication over the years with Dr. Wojewick and Dr. Sulak, for example. Dr. Wojewick has participated in a number of continuing medical education presentations with us and he actually does, he has a very interesting presentation that runs through the evidence in favor of medical marijuana for the various conditions. I am quite sure that we have polled our membership since the 2009 referendum, but not recently and so I can't tell you that we surveyed the members specifically about this bill, went through our typical process of review by our legislative committee.
Okay. How often does your legislative committee actually hear from the physicians who are actually...